So I think we'll call to order and. So, uh, Christie, if you'll call the roll, please.
President Cook?
Yeah.
Vice President, um.
Here.
Treasurer Prince?
Here.
Secretary Thomas?
Here.
Pressy Gaten?
Here.
Pressy Zimmerman?
Present.
Pressy Everard.
Yeah. So, uh, we're gonna do, uh, goal number six of the conservation ethic and Linda would be.
Sure. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of for our interest in nature to develop a greater awareness of our role in and. The total. Conservation asks us to assume a moral role to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. A conservation attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural. Uh, the county's open space. Goal, you want me to go one?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
To preserve native plants and animals, ge- geological feature. Ecosystems that are threatened or endangered in McHenry County and to reclaim such ecosystems that have been degraded for the benefit. Of present and future generations. Generations and for their own sake.
Thank you. The conservation and storage pledge, Ray, could you do that?
Yep. Uh, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number eight. Strong, resilient woodlands, prairies, and wetlands while striving to foster a deep sense of peace.
All right, any questions or issues about the agenda? I got them. Okay, Christie, we, uh, should I have a motion or not?
I'll sort.
Second, second. The roll, please.
Secretary Thomas?
Yeah.
Steve Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pressy Gaten? And President, um, Pressy Everard? Um, Abbott, uh, Treasurer Prince?
Yes.
And President Cook.
Yes. Okay, um. I think we, uh, gave Brad his recognition and presentation last time, but we'll remember that again. So I have nothing under seven point oh, anyone else wishes to make a recognition of some kind? Now is your chance. And we'll move to, uh, trustee reports. Um, any of the trustees like to bring us up to date, Sean?
Uh, no, I just wanted to mention that, um, you know, next week I'll be going to the IRPA, NRPA conference. Uh, Thursday through Saturday.
Great.
And, uh, you know, I was looking at the program and, uh, it's nice to see there's lots of, uh, board items on there for the board members and trustees and. And, you know, thanks to, you know, Elizabeth's hard work that there's lots of conservation sessions too, so. And, um, so it's, it's good to see that there's gonna be, you know, more than enough to do and I'll be happy to report on my sessions.
We'll look forward to it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Where, where is that at?
Uh, downtown.
Oh.
You can see.
Nice. Um. John, would you like to bring us up to date with the color?
I would be remiss in my doing to bring you up to date. This is a service meeting, but I would also like to thank you all for inviting me to, um. And also allowing you to be your liaison for the county board. It's a pleasure, guys, to sit here.
We, we appreciate it and please, uh. Uh, I mean, it's an informal group and. We don't always adhere to strict Robert's rules, so. You're, yeah, you're welcome to jump in.
You know, I will.
Okay. Good morning. So, President's report, um, well, nothing has changed in my life since last. Thursday, so I'll let it go with that. And obviously, we all wish Lloyd and Bernard speedy recovery. Is it to the hospital? Oh. Um. All right, any, uh, public comments out there?
There are none.
Good. All right. So, uh. Linda, do you wanna check, take us through this check concern?
Uh, I'm, I move that we, um, adopt the consent agenda. Twelve point one, approval of minutes of previous meeting, twelve point one A, December twenty 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 two, regular meeting. Twelve point two, acceptance of the treasurer's report, twelve point two A, acceptance of the treasurer's report for December thirty first. Twenty twenty one, twenty two, as presented. Twelve point two B, acceptance of investment report for quarter three fiscal year twenty twenty three, as presented. Twelve point three, authorization to prepare specifications and let up bids for the printing and mailing. Uh, for issues of the district's quarterly magazine landscapes, beginning with the. The summer of twenty twenty three issue and running through spring twenty twenty four. BID number oh, one, two, three, dot, one, oh, dot, oh, one. Twelve point four, reauthorization to prepare specifications and let up bids for the demolition. And restoration of the football building, intern residence, and the former research field station at Glacial Park Conservation Area Rainwood. Illinois, BID number. One, zero, two, one. Dot, oh, nine, dot, oh, one, dash, R, A. Twelve point five, reauthorization to prepare specifications and let bids for the Prairie Trail Stormwater Repairs. Between Rainwood Walk Road and Barnard Mill Road in Rainwood, Illinois, BID number oh, three, two, two. Dot, oh, nine, dot, oh, three, dash, R, A. Twelve six. Reauthorization to prepare specifications and let bids for the Prairie Trail Stormwater Repair South of Barnard Mill Road in Rainwood, Illinois, BID number. Oh, three, two, two, dot, oh, nine, dot, oh, two, dash, R, A. Twelve point seven, second reading ordinance number twenty three dash one, zero, two, two, and ordinance adopting amendments to the personnel. Policy and procedural map, as presented. Twelve point eight, resolution number twenty three. Dash, oh, two, ratifying the creation of the following job descriptions effective December twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Conservation and ecology manager, restoration ecology manager, stewardship ecologist. Elimination of NRM Special Projects Manager and National Resource. Assistant Manager and minor modifications to other full-time job descriptions to address. Group reporting structure realignments. Twelve point nine, authorization to begin the negotiation process on the listed aspiring farm program. This is a twenty parcels containing approximately one thousand eight hundred thirty-five plus or minus acres. Twelve point ten. Resolution number twenty three dash oh, three, ratifying the executive director, directors execution of a First Amendment. To license agreement with the Commonwealth Edison Company for use of sixty seven oh, seven, South US Route thirty one in Richmond, Illinois.
Thank you. Um. A second, please.
Second.
Ready, a second. The roll, please.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Vice President down?
Yes.
Treasurer Prince?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
And Pressy Gaten?
Yes.
So, uh, we're gonna, uh, go to other board business and, uh, you know, Sean submitted some questions about the, uh. Likely. Bills. Were those questions answered?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Um. Anybody, uh, have any specific questions about the bills payable or the treasurer's internal report? I think Pat, this is yours.
Uh, which one?
The Director of.
The thirteen. I need, I need a motion to consider to approve the payment of bills as indicated in the submission of bills pending report for the month ending December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Sorry, I did not hear the first. Okay, thank you. In the second?
I'll say it.
Thank you.
And then.
Um, thirteen.
Do we own these individually? Okay, so we'll do them individually, um, proceed, please.
Treasurer Prince?
Yes.
Pressy Gaten?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President down?
Yes. Out of your vote.
Thirteen point two. Bravew Education Center Emergency Repairs, consideration of a motion adopting resolution twenty three dash zero four. Resolution waiving the formal bidding process. Authorizing the executive director to execute a contract with Carmichael Construction Incorporated of Minro, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to address emergency. Repairs at the Bravew Education Center. So.
Right. Yeah. I think Pat made the motion and then.
I got you. Sorry.
Okay.
You guys aren't speaking up very loudly tonight.
Well, you got a lumble, Phil.
Okay. Now, okay, uh, Vice President down?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Pressy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pressy Gaten?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
And Treasurer Prince?
Yes. Okay. Uh, thirteen point three. Amendment to resolution twenty two dash nine zero, we authorizing the purchase of six replacement vehicles. Of the Illinois State Bid Purchasing Contract for a total cost not to exceed four hundred and forty thousand, five hundred.
And the second, please. Unless there's any discussion.
The second.
That's the second, okay.
Thank you. Pressy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pressy Gaten?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President down?
Yes.
Treasurer Prince?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Elizabeth, uh, do we? Should we have a discussion of before we adopt the motion?
I would, uh, since you have discussed it, uh, and in several meetings, I would take a motion in a second. And then any discussion on the agenda, unless there's anything that's significant here that we're gonna need to just pull back, but I, I didn't hear anything with such that.
All right. So.
Okay, thirteen point four. Passage of ordinance twenty three dash ten twenty three. Adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty four tentative combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance. Consideration of a motion to pass ordinance twenty three dash ten twenty three. Sam said that, yeah.
Second. Second, okay, now, um. Obviously, this was a, a big document, an important document. We've been working on this since last summer and, um. I know that Sean's, uh, submitted some questions for clarification. I wanna be sure that those have been clarified.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, does anyone else have any, uh, things they would like to bring up about the, um. About the tentative budget?
I have, I have. So what's within this budget? That's just a budget. It's not necessarily means that that's gonna happen.
It's our plan and it authorizes us once it gets to the approval to expand, but just as we do with our purchasing policy, items always, you know, with the thresholds. They're reviewed through our internal processes. If they're over twenty five thousand, they come to the board for bidding, so. Um, it's basically a plan. It's a math, but our intent is that these are things that we're doing. Some grants have been accepted. We're moving towards, right? So this is the plan.
Well, there was one point that was raised to me that I think I'll just, uh. Um, speak to and then I think it's. Clarified. Um. And this, Elizabeth, relates to your contract, which is effective through June thirtieth, uh, of twenty five. And, um. The tentative budget implies that you will get a four point seven percent salary increase consistent with the salary increase that. We have approved for all the employees. Um. I believe I'm fair and it's correct to say that your, uh, salary. Board will consider that on an annual basis each year. So that the four point seven is a placeholder, but it isn't, um. An indication of what the board is gonna do in May or June when we address this issue.
Correct. The current contract that was approved does not have a specific amount.
Right.
And so it's there and that will be discussed in a.
All right, so I, I just. I know, I think we all understand that, but the question was raised, so I wanted to. Um. Repeat it. Um. The budget contains, uh, a number of reappropriations. Um, and that just seems to be, um. Standard operating procedure because during the course of the few years that I've been on the board, you see projects that are budgeted and then incomplete. For them unable to be completed, and so they're carried over to the, to the next year, so. I don't see anything unusual in that. Um.
I had one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Most of that is just capless vehicles that we couldn't get, so there were some projects we kind of tried and just don't get to. But in the last couple years, most of us have capitalized, we just haven't been able to procure within that year, so it goes into the next year.
Right, okay, so that, I mean, that's understandable. Okay. Um. And then. The question was raised about, uh, contractual services and commodities. That, uh, across the board are going up about ten percent. When we had our, uh, discussion in August. And we, uh, approved. Um. Non-personnel, other operating expenses. Um. Would go up. Seven percent. But the outlier was fuel. And at that time, fuel was four dollars and fifty one cents. And so based, the projection based on. The amount of fuel the district uses in a year. Combined with the overall seven percent. Non-personnel operating expense increase. Even estimated increase of nine point nine percent for other operating expenses. Uh, so, I mean, I think that's the basis for this. Increase in contract, contractuals and commodities by about ten percent. However, the price of fuel is not four dollars and fifty one cents anymore. So. I think the reality is that, again, the budget is just a. A platform to, um. Sort of tentatively make decisions, but we may find that. That the actual expenses are less than what we are providing for. Um. And I guess I'm looking for affirmation of that.
Uh, absolutely, I will. It's a good, a really good point that I forgot to mention the last time we did the presentation on it. And then the seven percents, um, that we brought to you, and I did use it in the, in the projection going forward, it was really to. Give the leadership team a guideline to build their operating budget and what could they bring or increase their operating budget by. Prior to that, they haven't been, they haven't been increased in like eleven years, so when we started the budget process in the last decade, the director of the local managers, you cannot increase your budget. You have to absorb any inflation. So we came to the board and said, hey, inflation's already over seventy ten here. Can we set it here as a placeholder? So that's where that seven came from. And then, yeah, fuel was a big piece of that. I didn't go back and reduce the fuel down. If, if, you know, it'll probably be sixty days ago, I don't know where I could have, but we chased it before and then got burned at the end.
Right, right, so, I, I mean, and then the other, in general, the, you know, the comment that I think. That I will, I will make, but I think we all understand is that. Um, uh, the budget reflects deferred replacement and maintenance costs, so. Um, you know, everything is projected ahead a little bit, and there's some catching up in this budget. Um, everyone seems to be replacing furniture and. Adding some. Um. And for, you know, John's gonna hear this again when it gets to the county board. Um. I. You know, I think. We've looked at these issues and we're making some prudent recommendations. So that we don't have equipment breaking down and, and things not accomplished because we're not prepared to accomplish them. Um. The only. Other comment I'll make is that, uh. Nuisance control, and I have to thank Pat for pointing this out, is budgeted to go from, uh, two hundred dollars to seventy two hundred dollars. Which is an increase of thirty six times. Now. I would do this. And so, uh, I feel sorry for the Beavers.
Who's the nuisance?
They're gonna be targeted, or, or else maybe nuisance control refers to the trustees. And maybe there's something in store, but I would say, oh, it's my, uh.
I have, I have one more. I. It's easier to look through this. When you got time than it is to, you know, a presentation.
Yeah.
So one of my, I mean, questions was, is planning and development. Every, every, um. Fund has, uh, contractual services. So like there. Um, it's eight months actual, it's two hundred dollars, but the budget is eighteen thousand, so. Then the budget last year was ten. I mean, what's, what is contract, what is contractual services? Everything has contractual services. What is that?
So I, I think in this case of John. Backing up, he might be working with the details, but last year, uh, planning wants to allow for something set aside for engineering services. They might be. For a variety of different projects, so the budget, they were in issue, the twenty three budget I said last year. Uh, was increased by ten thousand to allow for that, so that's been rolled forward. If they don't need it, you know, they won't use it, but we, they wanna hold that as a placeholder for. Um, and then what was the other? Oh, the other one was for their digitizing. That's new this year. That went in front of the board too. Um, originally as a capital request and really because it's, there's really no hardware and it's mostly gonna be contractual services. I need to add the capital back in July and put it in contractual service for.
Instead of physical files, it'll be scanned in the cloud, it provides access, you know, and.
Yeah, it's available. Yeah, originally I thought it was like a software application. It's gonna have a hard positive, but that's not it. Well, thank you.
All right, any other, um, issues with respect to the budget, so, um, I guess you've got the motion in a second and now we'll.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President down?
Yeah.
Treasurer Prince?
Yes.
Pressy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pressy Gaten?
Yeah.
President Cook?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Elizabeth, so. Executive Director's report.
Yeah, I really don't have much to add for everything that I provided last week, so I will just brief. I will say on behalf of the staff and with the policy manual that was adopted. To thank the board for acknowledging the three additional holidays for staff that went a long way, uh, and, and again, appreciate their support and to be on par with the county. And the number of, of days off, um, I do believe with the budget, again, all the time and effort and do appreciate the conversation, the critical eye that our board, uh, does put into building the budget and the staff's work to getting the questions answered. Um, you know, we strive to, to be physically responsible and, uh, and we end up year after year, uh, because of good decisions that are made, uh, through the plan. To, to save money where we can, make additional revenue come in and, and to do a great, great job, but again, it's a time, a place in time. Based on, um, where we're at and we're building this so far out, um, before we actually are listening to things to get some thoughts around it, but, um. Otherwise, the conference, um, do appreciate, uh, trustee Zimmerman and trustee Gaten going down for that. Great educational. I will, again. Look for trustees, anyone who wants to join us for Park Stay down in Springfield on May second or third. If that's of interest, we go down, we meet with our legislators. Um, there's a reception where we meet, the many members of the Illinois General Assembly, both in the Senate and the House and, and, uh, other officers. Uh, from departments, Department of Natural Resources and others that usually come in and spend some time with us, so that's really key. And, um, the other thing I can say and we'll do a formal recognition, um, Jenny Hyder, who is our Human Resources Manager, uh, she recently was notified. Um, the Illinois Park and Recreation Association with New Forest Preserve and Conservation Section, each section of IPRA has a distinguished member of the year. And Jenny Hyder will be awarded the section member of the year for the Forest Preserve and Conservation Section for her efforts. She led our educational session, so. I give credit to the full team. Only thing I did was encourage them, Forest Preserve and Conservation Districts represented for the park districts and to build a pathway for, uh, future growth and development. But, um, the members and Jenny being one of them, uh, Caitlin is. On social media, but have been very engaged and involved with the committee this year and Jenny was, it will be recognized at the state conference during the month. I mentioned that and, uh.
That's great, nice.
That's all I have.
I've, uh, any reports from trustees about any meetings, conferences, or?
I'm speaking again. Um, we, Farm Bureau, no. Farm Bureau, uh, meeting last Wednesday and we had a, our meeting was in the afternoon. We had, um, like five people from, we got there and, uh, answered questions and, uh. There's a lot of questions about, you know, the way they mow now along the roads and they only mow single paths. And the thought is, of course, is for the. Uh, locally, you know, the weeds or the habitat for the.
Monarchs?
Yep. So then some people are mowing it, taking upon themselves to mow the. You know, mow the rest of it to the fence line. So, of course, that got everybody excited because, you know, that's private property and they're gonna call the police and all this other stuff. So he goes, well, wait a minute. Well, they're gonna mow it in the, in the spring. First thing in the spring, they're gonna mow it back. Because of weeds and then, uh, but there was a lot of discussion on that. And then the other thing was, um. Living snow fence, they not having much success. So they're gonna go back and raise the ante. You know. Raise the, try and get more money greater. But it saves them a lot of money.
Um. Of course, it's been that.
Well, yeah, but it blew, I mean, just a little bit that it blows, you know?
Yeah, right.
And, oh, and salt. Um, they're trying to really reduce the salt usage. Or, which I, I didn't know, um, you know, I said, well, you still use brine, where the brine's only like twenty five percent. Um. All right, versus what?
Point three, point three.
Wow. You make me, you make me a liar. And then, you know, the regular salt's a hundred percent, so.
See, I was driving on Route twelve from Richmond to Lake Geneva and I was behind the brine. Truck, I honestly have never seen that, uh, being distributed down the road. Uh, so do we do that in McHenry?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I just haven't, I haven't seen it locally. I just remember.
Does the district do any liquid? Yeah, we do have, uh, the application. Again, it takes the right circumstance, uh, to, that it's affected that, but, uh, yeah, we will, uh. Uh, we will use it, especially Lost Valley.
Okay. Right.
So I have.
Well, thank you.
No, no, uh, comments on the.
Any, uh, anyone else? Thank you. Uh, I think we'll take a motion to return. I'll salute Chris. A second, please, and Linda.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President down?
Yes.
Treasurer Prince?
Yes.
Pressy Gaten?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.